Presentation at the public hearing. Just want to cover a few quick points. The top chart shows the differences from the current year to the proposed year. You can see that the Board of Education increases 1.8 million. The town side is 1 million. And what's interesting, on the road improvements, we're still going to spend the same $1.2 million, but because of the chart at the bottom of the page, which I'll explain in a minute, we see that the actual general fund expense, or the taxation expense, is much less. When you put that all together, the total increase over the current year is $2.3 million, or 2.69 percent over the current year. The proposed total mill levy, which includes the road levy, is 33.63, an increase of 1.05 mills, or 3.22 percent over the current levy. The chart at the bottom is the proposed municipal aid budget from the governor's recommended budget. And there's, you can see, the column, the mill column, the first column of numbers, is what we receive in the current year for each individual program. The second column on the right, or the column on the right, is what we're proposing to receive under the governor's proposed budget. And you can see that there's a substantial change in the aid municipalities are to receive. Total dollar value, you can see down at the bottom, is about the same, almost exactly the same. But how it is distributed and its purpose has changed. The ECS grants, you can see, are up substantially, 300, roughly $340,000 for the town of Weathersfield. And that's made up of these other numbers that don't appear anymore. Okay? The LoCIP and the Town Aid Road, which is the 2 $400,000 numbers, 403, 491, and 407, 116, those two numbers, those two grants, are to, we use those on capital improvements, have forever. Town Aid Road, you have to, and LoCIP is generally used for capital improvements. So you can see the increases in those. And what makes particularly LoCIP different next year is that where this was state general fund revenue sharing, LoCIP is now all borrowed money from the state. So Town Aid Road and LoCIP are now borrowed funds from the state, rather than general distributions from a general fund revenue with the state of Connecticut. So those two numbers go into the road fund. We've used those for roads for quite a while. So that leads, it's a substantial increase over what we used to get for those two programs. So that results in the, in the less of a need to have a mill levy increase, or a mill levy support for the road fund. Whereas we had $900,000 this year to match with these two numbers to get 12 million in the current year, we now only need 3.89, $389,000 to match with these two numbers to get the same $1.2 million for the road fund. So we're spending the same amount, but because of the formula for the dollars that go into that fund changed, that particular amount changed. Which also means that we have less general fund revenue. Just some charts that are part of the manager's budget proposal. And there's a box up here with proposed budgets if you want to get them, and they're online. The top, the chart on the left, total expenditures from 2005, you can see the trend is there. Then the next chart to its right is unexpendated fund balance. Fund balance is a pretty good indicator of the health of a community. The town of Weathersfield has a policy that says that they'll maintain an unreserved fund balance, or an unassigned fund balance, between 7 and 10 percent. And that helps with our bond rating in covering any unexpected emergencies. So we're projecting exactly 10 percent going into this budget. Historically, we've budgeted 700,000. The current year, we're budgeting 350,000. We're proposing to only budget 300,000 next year. So we're reducing the amount of unexpendated fund balance we're using to support everyday operations. And we can, will expect to continue that trend. Finally, you can see at the bottom chart, spending increases over time, how, given the, over the past, you know, eight or nine years, what the annual budgets has done. Every year, but the 2014 number is an actual number. So, that's the budget in a nutshell. And we'll have the public hearing on the, on the 15th. So if the council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. We'll go into greater detail on the 15th. And it's all in the budget book. It's online. There's a link off the town's webpage. You can get the full budget.
Do councilors have any questions?
I just want to compliment Jeff and Rayanne and Sue for a great job on this. And as we go through it in more detail, I think we'll have a lot more questions in the next, in the next meetings we set up.
I do want to thank the town staff for this budget. Everybody worked hard. Rayanne and Sue especially. All the department heads really took a hard look at the numbers. So this was a joint effort on the town staff. So very much appreciate it.
Next on our agenda is a hearing of its public comments. The first item is 1A, hearing on the resolution authorizing a historic preservation grant. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak about this hearing item? Any members wishing to speak about this hearing item? Any members wishing to speak about this hearing item? I declare the hearing closed. Next is general comments. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Tucker?
I came here with a misconception that the, what the superintendent of School was about to make is presentation. But apparently, I misunderstood things. Anyways, I've come here for a couple of things. I came here with the idea of asking Mr. Emmett, I saw the, in the rear rooms of the rear room. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll sit down. Wow. I'm a broadcaster. The reason I came here just was to talk to Mr. Emmett, to ask him about some of the things going in the football program. And I find a clipping in the Weathersfield life, in the back page, about how they charge to join these different programs. So I don't know what these programs are for. Are they, I suspect, maybe uniforms? And I also see that they seem to be limited to perhaps just freshmen and juniors because of the weight problem. I'll pass this out so you can see what I'm talking about. So yeah, I've been kind of, kind of cut short because I came here with a different reason. But it does come to mind that, the other thing was, as I recall, whenever a person has a, commits a felony, he's not permitted to vote. I don't know if that's true or not. But I wonder if the registrars, if that still exists, are checking that. I imagine we're working with the police department on that. That was, my second point was, they're dredging the entrance to the cove. To me, that's, I love the cove. I've been, I've done a lot of boating in the cove. And I've been along to a member of the club since 1950. And they're dredging the channel to six feet. Wow. Before you could, before you could only go four feet, there was a pipe that went from the sewer plant. And it's going 60 feet wide. Wow. That's going to make a good tide going through there. As it is, the tide is 14 inches up and down. But my, my next point was, where are you going to put that spoil? Now, I have a suggestion. The federal government's come up with this infinite wisdom and makes you, dumps this stuff some places and then other places it don't. Normally, they would take this on a barge and take it out to sea and dump it out there. But my thought is, hey, why not just pipe it across the river over into Weathersfield? We own a piece of land over there, town of Weathersfield. And if you remember, in East Hartford and Glassleyberry, we should go under the bridge there on your way to Home Depot. I'm not making a sales pitch. Anyways, there's, there's our time when that water's there and the road's blocked off. If you put that spoil sand in that area, we've got rid of it. It's in our land. It's Weathersfield. So that's my thought. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Are there other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. It was only this evening I was able, before I came here, just to get a copy of the manager's report regarding the budget, the proposed budget, I should say. So I really am not up on all of the items, but what I, you know, I notice in here, the grant list has only increased 0.3 percent. Extremely anemic. I noticed in here where you're talking about purchasing more fire engines. If, I think the fire, I think there was two of them in here that you're talking about. $800,000 and somewhere in here, from what I recall, you were going to put down so many, you were going to put into the budget this year something like 40-some thousand dollars.
$200,000.
$200,000 as a down payment.
One truck.
And then the rest will be in payments, obviously, like we do with turf and we do with a lot of other things. We also have fire, we also have dump trucks in here. 10-wheel, number of pickup trucks, small dump truck, utility truck. I don't, you know, folks, where we, you know, this economy doesn't warrant spending this kind of money. We bought a fire engine, what, four or five years ago? That big thing for $1.2 million that sits in the garage and goes out on the highway to control traffic once in a while? Or you take to a parade to show how wealthy we are? And we're making payments on that thing. We continue to make payments on a lot of things. And this, this economy is terrible. We cannot afford this. But on the other hand, I, tonight, also, when I got home, talk about, and I'm really talking about efficiency here at the moment, I made a, I made a request for information to the town of Weathersfield and the Board of Education back on January 8th. March 8th or there or abouts, I received the information that I requested from the town side, which I was happy to get. And I never filed a FOI complaint against the town of Weathersfield like I should have, but I didn't. And then it took another month today for me to get the Board of Education information. Three months. That is not very efficient. Your, the town of Weathersfield has X amount of days to produce the information on a freedom of information request, and the request is extremely simple in my case. I paid for develop, what they call development, to build a program to run. It produces the report that I want, and they send it to me with a bill. The bill has been running at six, first of all, the development cost, $350 roughly, about four, five years ago when Bonnie Theryan was here. You changed your general ledger system from whatever it was called to the MUNIS system. I had to pony up another 300 and some dollars to do development costs again, quite efficient for the town of Weathersfield. And I, of course, would pay $60 just to run a couple reports. And then this past year, it was $70, which I didn't complain. I paid it. This year, today, I get a bill for $180. Good grief, folks. Something that took an hour to run, that you charged me $70 last year, this year it took four hours to run, and you, and it was obviously another person running, doing it because it was at $40 an hour, but you came up with a bill of $180, $45 an hour for four hours for information that you just press a few buttons. I already paid for the development of running those reports several years ago and even years earlier. But efficiency? Mayor, you've got some serious problems if it takes four hours to run these several little reports that I've requested and took three months to produce. No wonder we're in trouble. You want to buy things, you, you can't handle what you currently have. How many days does it take, Mr. Council? And I don't know. When you do an FOI, the, the town is supposed to respond. Is it 10 days, 15 days? I don't know. But it was, in the case of the Board of Ed, three months. I didn't file anything against the town. I wanted to, but I knew darn well. It's a big effort, and it's not worth it. But $180, I will go to the FOI people and I will file a complaint unless Mr. Bridges goes back to the $70, because I think it's ridiculous. And your entire budget is probably based on that kind of efficiency. You could cut costs, Mr. Manager. And you don't. Nobody does in, in the town of Weathersfield. We just see things keep creeping up, creeping up. And what do we have? We chase companies out of town because our taxes keep going up. We have no jobs for our young people. We have no jobs for our middle-aged people. And the older ones too have no opportunities to find jobs because higher taxes in the state of Connecticut and all these towns have gone up so high, you chase companies out. And the only way we can get companies in here is to pay them millions of dollars to come here. I understand, Mayor, but this budget needs to go way down. You need to do something to think about, what can you do to make home sales become more active? How many is Doris giving to the, to the publications right now? Last week, there was none. The week before, there was a few and a couple of more foreclosures. One foreclosure and another one was a bank liquidating a house. And, and prior to that, there was a couple of weeks where there was none. Christmas time, you had about 18 of them, big deal. But you've got to do something to make prices of homes go up. And I think raising taxes, spending money the way you're doing it, is not working, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Sekus?
I just want to talk about a few things that I see every spring, and it upsets me in a way. Talk about efficiency and cost cutting. The idea that Mr. Tucker has is wonderful. And last, two weeks ago, I listened to the meeting on my TV at home after spending big bucks to get it on a different TV system. I, before I heard, we rent storage space in this town for excess stuff. I also heard on the radio on a different talk show, the storage business is a $13 billion business in this country. That's a lot of money. If we're renting space, that's money that's wasted, in my opinion, because we have a lot of empty buildings, a lot of, it might be cheaper to build a big storage unit for the town than rent space, if I heard right. Another thing that I find wasted every spring is you take a look at the sidewalks by town hall, by the middle school, various other places in town. There are tire tracks on the left and right of the sidewalk where the snow was cleared during the winter. Very good. The snow was cleared. But it also causes more work. You've got that little gully to fill in and smooth out. The blade on any plow could be wider than the tire base. And if a tire base went from just a wiser sidewalk, that'd be saving money with spring repair jobs. That really is another cost factor. And whoever says pennies don't add up doesn't know how to handle money. And if they say that, they shouldn't even be in public office, because it takes money to operate things, and we have limited money, but we also have unlimited ideas to make things better. Little things like that make a difference. And I'd like to see some of these ideas somehow, maybe a big suggestion box someplace for cost cut, you know, for cost cutting. I could think of one or two other things, but I would be referring to any certain parties that I don't want to refer to that is another example of wasted money in town. But let's forget about the money, because we all need money. As a matter of fact, the Allen and Book Wolf Nature Center is having its annual spring dance this coming Friday. We're having a nice live band there. The name of the band is The Players Club. It goes from 7 to 11:30 at the Pittkins Center. It'll be a fun time, and our ticket sales are a little down, a sign that we made, I hate to say it, did not survive the wind, so our advertising is not as good as I was hoping it would be. So if anybody wants to have some fun time, reminisce about the 60s and 70s and support a good cause, have some tickets with me. I'll be here another half hour at least. And you can pick them up at the Nature Center, at now Prospect Street. And I want to thank you again, and I wish you well with the new budget. But there's such a thing as not going up, especially when you don't get raised. So let's make believe we're like, have to keep it within what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sekus. Are there other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Rue?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. George A. Rue, and that's spelled R-U-H-E, 956 Cloverdale Circle. I have no comments of council, but I just have a, a couple of questions that I hope will be addressed as we, the citizenry, listen and become more involved in the budget process. Couple of things that Jeff said caught my attention was borrowed funds. These are borrowed funds. Will, will that be, if we, if we get a copy of Jeff's budget, will, will that become clear with what, what that means, or?
I can explain.
If you, if you would, it's up to you.
The governor used to distribute LoCIP money, local capital improvement program money. It used to be sales taxes or taxes the state collected and then redistributed to the towns. He's proposing instead this year to borrow those funds at the state level to use to distribute to the towns.
Okay.
The towns are not borrowing.
All right, the states borrow.
The states borrow it to give to us.
All right, but that, that's a problem and it's, all right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
And you also mentioned something, you will have less general fund money. Is, is there, is that, in other words, the amount of money that we're expecting to get from the state is obviously going to be less? Is that, is that a yes or no?
It's expected to be the same, but the, there's more restrictions on its use.
Okay.
So, which, which really doesn't affect our program too much, because we have a capital budget that's applicable in those situations. There's just less general fund revenue from state resources.
Okay. And you mentioned the capital budget a couple of times. I'm very interested in that, and I hope, I hope an area of great concern gets addressed. The other, the only other question, you mentioned that your budget report is online. Okay? It's, it's online. I thought I heard you say you could get a copy here.
In this box.
Oh, in that box. I heard you mention a box, but I didn't know where the box was. Now, is that the, is that the budget that is required by charter to be available to the citizenry sometime prior to the budget hearing? There is a charter requirement that, I forget what the exact date is, it's a several.
April 1st. April 1st.
Oh, is that, is that the charter require, is that, but that's the, the date for the manager to have his budget?
To the council. And then it becomes public.
Yes. And, but it has to be made, it used to have to be made available to the public in writing. Sometime, and that's it? That, I think, that, all right, that's, that's basically my, that's basically my question.
We used to do a synopsis. You know, we did a budget and brief.
Yeah.
But since we've put it all online now and we have copies available, we don't do the budget briefing.
That's fine. There were even just a couple of things that jumped out at me. And at this point, the only counsel that I would provide is, look at the budget very carefully. Look at it very, very carefully. And I have to hope, hopefully not idly or wrongly, that you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Are there other members of the public wishing to speak?
Can I ask a question? Well, Mr. Bridges, how did we do on our snowplowing budget?
We spent it.
Do we have money left?
No.
[laughing].
Well, and I'll get into that a little bit in my miss, my, my notes.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to council reports. Are there any reports or committees? Counselor Drake?
I just, I attended the school project building committee, a meeting last week, and I'm not going to get too much in detail because they're going to discuss PCB situation a little later. But that was probably the hottest thing for the whole meeting. Other than that, things are going well.
Any council comments? Counselor Cockburn?
And, yeah, this sort of relates to a committee, but of course, the, we've seen where the federal government, the FAA is talking about shutting down six of the control towers in the state. And, you know, we have interest, obviously, through the Brainerd Airport Noise Committee as to, you know, who we would call in the event that there was a complaint. And I was wondering, you know, obviously Jeff is intimately involved in the Brainerd Airport Noise Committee, such as, such as it may be. And I was wondering if you could just maybe indicate what the impact of, of shutting down the Brainerd Airport, Airport Control Tower might have on residents who may have noise complaints?
Well, the noise complaint hotline will still be in effect, because that goes to the airport manager's office, not the tower. What it does do is it, it impedes the ability of the airport personnel to identify which planes may or may not have followed the noise abatement procedures, which is really to go out over the river rather than over old Weathersfield to land or, when you take off. So that's what really happens. You don't have that person at the control tower who can identify which planes did not adhere to the noise abatement. Now, the control towers' noise abatement procedures by FAA regulation are voluntary. Even if the airport has them, the control tower cannot require a pilot to follow them. So they're voluntary, but we've learned over the years, and Jeff's been on the committee, that once, if there's a new pilot in the area, once they're aware of the noise abatement procedures, generally they're going to follow them. So it's usually the transient pilot or the new pilot that isn't aware of those procedures. And once you educate them, they pretty much follow it. So that's going to be more difficult.
Counselor Hurley?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate Kathy Bagley for getting the funds and the grant funds for the dred, dredging the cove. I think it was, it was over a million dollars, and she was very persistent and took many years, but finally was able to get it.
Is she going to talk? Is she going to talk?
Counselor McAllister?
Yeah, I just had three quick things. First, I understand potential oversight once in a while and communication, but I'd like to request any significant correspondence that's sent directly to Mayor be shared with the Board of Council going forward. My second thing is, in terms of the budget, I know we can't afford to purchase new open space, large open space, or maintain the open space that we have across the town by looking at our current budget. And I'm wondering, are we looking at doing a referendum during the November election rather than off-cycle? This way we can save that money. But not only a referendum for purchasing open space, but also a referendum for maintenance of existing open space, because I think it's difficult with all the acreage we own. Because I think it's difficult with all the acreage we own to continually keep that up. And, I mean, my personal opinion is, I'm not sure if I have the appetite to vote yes in a referendum, but, you know, I'm just one council member and I think it's a significant investment that there's a lot of emotion around in the public about keeping open space and preserving open space. So I'd ask that that be considered for November. And the third thing was relative to Mr. Young mentioning the increase of, looking to increase the value of our homes, which essentially would increase our grant list, right? If our value of our home go up. I think it's a supply and demand question, and I would think that on the supply side, if we can increase the appeal of our current housing stock compared to the competition of Rocky Hill, Newington, or such, that would certainly make it more attractive to people to move into town, which, you know, I know we've spoken about some different ideas in the past about trying to improve the housing stock here in terms of the age of it and things. But then the second thing is, in terms of increasing the demand, it's attracting new families. And in terms of doing that, it's a lot about the school system, which I think we've put a lot of money into recently, and I hope to see dividends paid off by that. But I think we own on the town side to try and look what we could do to improve the housing stock, stock options in town, which doesn't mean building houses, it means trying to encourage people to remodel, renovate, upgrade, and renew and refresh their housing and make the curb appeal comparable to outside towns.
Other counselors? Counselor Montney?
Thanks, Donna. Timing is good, Jim. I wanted to follow up that point because I had a couple of things about, we've been hearing about housing stock and housing issues in town. And in fact, I went back and looked at the first quarter in Weathersfield for housing sales through a couple of real estate agents and then Zillow, which is a public site, which folks can get on, zillow.com. Seventy-four homes, in fact, have sold in the first quarter in Weathersfield, in contrast to some public comment that we've heard that is suggesting that home sales are slacking. They're in fact the most robust they've been in six years. And I would also point out that looking at the values of those sales, and these aren't all homes that have been sold, but so all reported homes at the seventy-four, they are at, seventy-eight percent of those are at or above the appraised value, which market vision appraisal, if you go online, you can look at the assessed value for purposes of taxes. That firm indicates to most residents in Weathersfield that that should be about seventy percent of the market value. And the vision appraisal, of course, those numbers that were on the website are from before the 2008 recession, and home sales in the last two years were at forty-five percent of appraised value, up and coming this year. Two real estate agents I spoke with this week said that this has been the most robust period, and as I said, in four years, and the market values on homes are actually returning or exceeding where they were prior to the recession. So they feel that, they're very bullish about what's happening with residents. And to Jim's point, both of the real estate agents that I spoke to said that many, many homes in town are now doing exactly what Jim just said, renovating kitchens, opening up space to make them more contemporary compared to family needs. Most of the homes that they're selling are in fact being sold to families with children. And the number one thing referenced is schools and the full-day kindergarten, which was very interesting, given that we were involved with that last year. So in fact, a review of the actual facts that are happening with our market is actually very encouraging, very positive, and real estate agents are getting pretty excited about what's happening in Weathersfield. And we are exceeding our neighbors by a notable amount. Thank you, Mayor.
Other counselors? Counselor Drake?
Just, just a change in subject. There was an email sent to us regarding potential cat problem, and the same guy wrote an email to Hartford Current. I was just going to ask, maybe Jeff, you could look and see, talk to someone, see if we actually have a problem. Unless you're going to talk about it yourself, but it just kind of, kind of caught my eye, both letters.
I did reach out to the Lieutenant Poizan over the weekend when we got that, that email. There is, there were several feral cats were caught in that neighborhood over the past month or two. He reached out to the animal control officer. The lieutenant in charge of the ACO is out till Wednesday, so when that person comes back, they're going to have a broader meeting on feral cats and see what's going on in a particular neighborhood. But they did do some work in that neighborhood and caught several since that was several weeks ago. So they're going to see what, what the remaining issue is out there. Jerry asked that I reach out to CCM. I did. Kevin Maloney at CCM is going to dig up what they have on feral cats and we'll have to see what we can do.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. A couple of things, just to add to Counselor Cotkin's issue on Brainerd Airport, besides the noise issue, Mr. Manager, maybe you could check also, you know, as this goes forward, I don't know what the federal government's going to do, but it could all, this could also be a safety issue for residents in Old Weathersfield and probably Glastonbury and Hartford in regards to not having a tower manned and the type of aircraft coming in. We're not talking small planes, a lot of these are executive jets that come in, plus a lot of helicopters, things of that nature. So I know they would have to, you know, manage themselves as far as takeoff and landing, but it could be a safety issue and that's something that Weathersfield should be, you know, on the forefront of and ask the appropriate questions. Like I said, once again, it could be a problem for the, especially for residents in Old Weathersfield, the way the planes fly over their homes. I was invited and attended the Rotary Club celebration, seventy-five years. The mayor was also present. We were invited and went, and Mr. Tucker was also there as a member. And I was very, I didn't really know much about the Rotary Club and what exactly they did, and I did a lot of research, and my neighbor was, was very instrumental in getting me there. I'm actually thinking of joining. And you guys do a great job. It's, it's amazing, some of the programs you do and the events that you put on and the type of scholarships and things of that nature that you, and civic duties that you do, it's an A-plus. I really, I enjoyed myself there and it's every Tuesday night, and I think, like I said, I spoke to my neighbor and I'm thinking of joining the Rotary Club. It was very, very, very interesting. The third thing is, there was an article in the Weathersfield Life about the beavers issue in, and at the reservoir. And I've got pro and con calls, but most of them were very concerning calls that, that the animals were captured. And it's stated in the paper that they were captured, but they were actually captured and euthanized. And these people are speaking of how we could cohabitate with, with these animals and, or I should say, they're actually rodents, but there's a, there's a study out by Sessions Woods, and I would, I would recommend that perhaps maybe the town manager's office or the, or the park and recs people get that information and read it and see if we could do a little bit better job going forward, because I'm sure beavers are going to come back again into the town. And I hate to see these animals killed, as, as, you know, most people with open space and all, they want to see, they want to see nature, a little bit more nature, and I don't think we're doing our job as far as that goes. Yes, they do cause an issue at times, but I don't think it's an issue that, that really causes the town to, unless, unless it has to do with, you know, human, affecting human life or anything like that, I don't think we have to euthanize these animals. So just a comment on that. When we talk about the budget and all and things that are going on at the state level, there are two things, and I like, I'll, I'll report on this next time around, but there's some House bills and Senate bills. And there's House Bill 5494, Senate Bill 244, Senate Bill 309, and Senate Bill 127. And this is from our representatives that represent the town of Weathersfield and some of the surrounding towns. I'll write up a little report next time, but I'd urge some of the people in the audience and at home to go online and look up these bills and see what our representatives are doing. And with the budget crisis and all, I, I think a lot of this is, it's silliness, and I'll, I'll leave it at that for now until the next meeting. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Roberts?
Yes, on March twenty-fifth, I attended the swearing-in of the new police officer for, in Weathersfield. His name is Justin Hilkick. He's a native of Weathersfield, his family's been here for a long time. His mom was very involved in student, parent-student council. And he's got a bachelor's from Westfield State, and he starts the academy for six months on April fifth, and I think he'll be a great addition to the police department. Very young and very energetic, so I want to welcome him on behalf of the town council.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a couple items. I talked about the proposed budget hearing. It will be again April fifteenth here in council chambers, beginning at seven o'clock PM. And we have until, the council has until May fifteenth to adopt that budget. And then Lee Sekus talked about the Friends of the Nature Center's dance. Just want to reiterate, that's, it's the Eleventh Annual Spring Dance fundraiser. Tickets are twenty-five dollars in advance or thirty dollars at the door. And so that looks like a good event. And the other thing, just as a reminder to folks who travel to Glastonbury, beginning today, the Putnam Bridge is going to be undergoing restoration work, and that will continue through August of 2015. So just know that there will be delays during the week. They're going to be working to keep it open during rush hour times, but just know that there will be a delay. Okay. Moving on, Mr. Town Manager, your report.
Thank you. Just one other thing on the terms of snow plowing. We did expend the budget. The good news is, the governor, or excuse me, the FEMA did approve a seventy-two-hour window on the Blizzard for reimbursement from FEMA. So we anticipated forty-eight hours. It's now a seventy-two-hour window of expense, so that will certainly help cover those costs. So we should be okay.
Okay. Madam Town Clerk?
I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
If I may, I would like to add a motion. I'm sorry.
An item?
An item, I'm sorry. An item to the agenda, to add a motion for an executive session at the end of the meeting for a personnel matter.
And a second?
Second.
And in discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Again, opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Under Council Action 1A, we don't have any, I don't believe, any resignations or appointments for boards and commissions. We do have 1C, action on resolution authorizing a historic document preservation grant. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to authorize the town clerk to apply for a historic document preservation grant and to authorize Jeffrey K. Bridges, Jr. as town manager to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the town of Weathersfield a contract with the Connecticut State Library for Historic Documents Preservation Grant.
And a second?
Second.
Dolores, do you want to talk about that?
Yes. Since I started, they've been having targeted grants, and for a few years, we were able to do competitive grants because they offered back some of the money that the clerks collect for, on everything that goes through our records. And this is to preserve all the documents in town, and as you know, we have some things dating back to 1633, and it costs a lot of money to have the books kept up and readable, and they are all readable in pen and ink. So it's a, it's a good cause. We also do a lot of records management, and we were able to fund the whole records room downstairs, and we were able to pull back most records from off, out of town hall, back to town hall by using the Sallyport after the police moved out. And we've organized within each department a record system to follow all of the guidelines that are mandated by the state of Connecticut as far as keeping records. So we put the money to good use. Because of the budget in the state, they have pulled out most of the money so that we get only sixty-five hundred, but there were years where we were able to do the competitive and gotten fifty thousand. So it was a big help, and whenever they do the competitive grants, we do apply for those.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Dolores? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Under 3A, Weathersfield High School renovation project authorization to enter into an agreement with Fussin O'Neill Incorporated for services related to the environmental services for the high school renovation project. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approval, the proposal with Fussin O'Neill dated March eleventh, 2013, for the additional testing environmental services related, related to the Weathersfield High School renovation project.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. On your podium this evening is a revised proposal that has a not-to-exceed number of forty thousand dollars. We spent the last few days making sure we covered the bases, and you're going to hear this evening from Fussin O'Neill on what, where we are in the process and what we anticipate to be the completion of this testing phase so we can get on to the design phase of the remediation plan. And the proposal that we had on the podium tonight with the extra money in it is what we would prefer to see this evening. That way, it's a not-to-exceed number, and if we don't use that many tests, we won't be back. So that would be preferable. But Mr. Mays from Fussin O'Neill is here this evening to talk about PCBs in schools and where we are in this process.
This should be good. Okay, good evening. My name is Robert May. I represent a company called Fussin O'Neill Environmental Science. I am vice president with that company. I was asked to come here by the project team tonight to talk about PCBs, to give a little bit of background on PCBs in general, and also talk a little bit about the process that we're going to go through to complete the testing as the town manager has suggested. So in general, just a little bit of depth of information about PCBs. It's fairly recent within the regulatory community and stakeholders. By fairly recent, EPA actually came out with some guidance in 2009 September with regard to caulking in PCBs in building materials. At that time, they came out with a lot of guidance and fact sheets which are available on their website. So again, September 2009 is when really the process started with PCBs. It's not something that we've been dealing with for many, many years. One of the things EPA did is they actually commissioned a study for PCBs to look at the available information about PCBs, published articles, validated reports and so forth. They commissioned a company called Environmental Health and Engineering out of Massachusetts to conduct that review of literature. They published a report in January of 2012, so I took some facts out of that report. Again, just to document that the process and the evolution of PCBs is again very recent. So polychlorinated biphenols or PCBs were reported to have been used in several construction materials termed primary sources, including but not limited to caulking, adhesives, paints, and floor finishes during a timeframe between nineteen fifty- So we do find that actually PCBs can move into adjacent materials. Elevated concentrations of PCBs have been identified in materials like brick and mortar, concrete and foam insulation and other materials adjacent to these manufactured products that contain PCBs. The upper range of potential contamination in these adjacent materials, so again, not just the PCBs manufactured products, but the adjacent surfaces that they're in contact with can range up to 5,000 parts per million. Building materials with accumulated PCBs from primary sources are referred to as secondary sources. So this is a secondary source of PCBs that's in contact with the actual manufactured material. Again, PCB can also migrate to direct human exposure contact potentially such as soil and interior dust and indoor air. Once a building material that contains an unauthorized use of PCBs, which is essentially what these products are, if you test these materials and find that PCBs are present at certain concentrations, they're unauthorized use, essentially illegal and need to be removed and disposed of. Manufactured products containing PCBs that are equal to 50 parts per million are what's considered a regulated. And those materials are considered PCB bulk product waste for disposal purposes. So at the time of disposal during a renovation project or something that's going to impact the materials, you need to take those materials out and properly dispose them if they exceed those concentrations. Materials that contain PCBs as a result are released, so again, from these primary sources that they've migrated into the adjacent materials, those are considered PCB remediation waste. And there's different cleanup standards you have to actually clean up too for those adjacent materials. And those materials, I say, can be soil, concrete and brick materials. So just to give you a general idea of where we find PCBs, again, a lot of the guidance came out talking about caulking materials, but we have a number of materials. The center photograph, you can see various spots, window sashes, so the part that holds the glass in, the glazing compound can contain PCBs. Caulking at various points of the window, along the jams or the sides of the windows, the top of the window, the sill of the window. Various other joints in construction for expansion joints can have caulking materials which may contain PCBs. Floor finishing materials, the top right photograph, the polyurethane coating and adhesives and mastic underneath the flooring may also and have been found to contain PCBs. The bottom right picture, you can actually see where a caulking joint has dissimilar materials, one side brick, one side concrete. So you have multiple potential different adjacent materials where PCBs could be present. On the bottom left photograph is a photograph of ceiling mastic material. Mastics and adhesives used to glue and for waterproofing materials also can contain PCBs both in the ceilings and potentially in flooring materials. This is the remediation decision tree the EPA puts out. Again, this is not an April Fool's joke. This is actually a remediation decision tree the EPA put out. Some important points to put out here are when a building was built, again, PCBs were banned in 1979. So pretty much after 1980 construction, new buildings, additions that were built, we don't look for PCBs in those building materials. We look at prior to 1980 construction for where we're going to test and look to identify PCBs. As part of a project, you look at two things. One is you're going to plan to look for PCBs and remove all of them. Or secondly, you look at your renovation projects and make a decision about which materials are going to be impacted and test and remove those as you find PCBs present. So again, you make the decision to test and move forward. One of the first things that is recommended by EPA is to actually test the building air, so an indoor air. That testing was done by one of the consultants on this project to test the air in the buildings prior to or as part of the testing process to determine whether or not there was a concern for PCBs in the environment where the students are actually and teachers are present. That testing was completed and there was no air issues found. Next, you sample the caulk or building materials. And any materials greater than or equal to 50 parts per million are considered regulated and would require remediation under special plans with EPA. That's the stage we're actually in right now. So essentially, this first phase of testing, identifying the source materials, the primary materials in the building. And I'll talk a little bit about where we're finding PCBs or where the consultants have found it. Once you do that testing, you have to look for those adjacent materials, those secondary sources. So once you identify where the PCBs are in manufactured product, the next step is to actually test those adjacent materials, determine where PCBs have migrated to and facilitate a cleanup as part of your renovation remediation project. So that's the next phase of testing that's going to be undertaken for this project in order to put together a plan and send that to EPA for the proposed remediation of the project. Okay, so just to reinforce those items, so first, understanding what is regulated. So first, are the source materials or your PCB bulk products? So again, that's going to be your manufactured materials which have the PCBs in it. So caulking materials, adhesives, paint, glazing materials, those kind of materials. Second, are the adjacent materials that are in contact with it as PCB remediation waste? So the diagrams you can see actually are part of a recent reinterpretation that EPA made on the disposal of these items to help streamline the process. That decision came out in October of 2012. And you can see how on the photograph to the left, you can see brick to the far left, caulk joint in the middle and some concrete in between. Prior definition was PCB bulk product waste and PCB waste for disposal. Each had different disposal requirements. They still have different testing requirements, but now they've actually modified the definition to allow disposal of the two together if removed and it's part of a project. So now both are considered bulk product waste for disposal, but still require that testing to determine what the concentrations are in the adjacent materials to what you're going to clean up those levels to. Lastly is that there is something where if you test the materials and you find it's less than 50 parts per million, you have to make sure it's what's called an excluded PCB product, which means it was manufactured and installed prior to 1984. Because this building had substantial renovation in 1984, 80's timeframe for windows and a lot of renovation in 1992, some of the products that have been tested and found to have PCBs will not meet the definition of excluded PCB product and will have to come out as part of the project. The other thing to note is the Bureau of School Facilities, which reviews the plans and documents for the renovation project. They have a requirement to do this testing. And Connecticut DEEP actually has a lower threshold for PCBs, which is anything less than one part per, or greater than one part per million has to also be remediated as part of the process. So one is an EPA federal requirement and second is a Connecticut requirement. So we're dealing with both issues of potential in this project. So again, bulk product materials greater than 50 parts per million, this is an EPA regulated bulk product waste. Materials, potentially excluded products, again, the definition is that materials have to have been manufactured and installed prior to October of 1984. And the cleanup standards for the remediation waste for these adjacent materials, once we've identified PCBs in the source materials, we now have to remediate the adjacent materials if it's present to less than one part per million for a high occupancy use building, which this school would be. You can see the hours are, any time spent greater than 6.7 hours per week in a building is considered a high use. And so those adjacent materials have to be cleaned up to one part per million. And then the cleanup standards, one of the major processes which will be something talked about later, is that at the end of the process, once the process is gone through for remediating these materials, this has to be verified, once the work is done, to verify those surfaces are clean. So there's another round of testing that'll actually happen later in the process, once the remediation work is completed. And that sampling can be at a frequency, as you read here, is about 1.5 meters or every five feet. So pretty significant potential sampling at the end of the process that'll be submitted to EPA as part of the plan for post-verification testing. So where PCBs have been found, so there's been two firms out doing testing thus far. The first one, Eagle Environmental, had a report that was published, I believe, this January of 2012, which was basically some initial testing for exterior materials. They tested various ages of the building. All the testing they did verified that the materials listed here have PCBs less than 50, but actually do contain PCBs greater than one. So they'll be Connecticut regulated. This is window caulking, frame caulking, door caulking, the window glazing and some other joint cauls in the building. The second firm, Environment Services, has done a number of tests on the building. First, as I mentioned, they did the air sampling, which the documentation there shows that the building is safe from the air and wipe standpoint. There's no concern with PCBs in the building. They've also done soil sampling around the building to determine from these caulking materials on the outside if it's actually migrated to the soil. We do have some soil areas that were high and we've actually already prepared a plan as part of the Phase 1 construction project to actually submit a plan and specifications to remove that. This next phase of testing is going to be to address the other materials in the building. They've also tested roofing materials, which were less than 50 parts per million, vinyl baseboards and the associated adhesives or glues that actually hold those to the wall, interior window frame caulking also. So these materials, again, have PCBs, but less than 50 parts per million. Materials that we have that actually are greater than 50 parts per million include vinyl floor tile and the associated mastic or adhesive that glues those down. Number of samples, locations throughout the school actually have greater than 50 parts per million and will require remediation as part of the project. Carpet adhesive, also greater than 50 parts per million in some select locations. Paint on plaster, we actually had one location that actually had a very, very high result, greater than 50 parts per million. There was a number of samples throughout the building that actually did have PCBs, but at very low concentrations, above one, but certainly less than 50, other than this one location. And interior expansion joint was another area where they did find caulking material that actually did have greater than 50 parts per million in several locations.
That's, and he'll be happy to answer any questions. I think the, as was stated, we're at the phase now where we need to not test the tile or the window caulk. We're testing the brick and the concrete that the tile and window caulk was sitting on, substrates. And then further soil samples to determine the extent to which these materials need to be removed during construction. And that's the phase of testing we're on. Also, as was stated, the air and wipe samples that came back so far all show that there isn't, there isn't an exposure to anybody in the building. These materials are under paint, they're under tiles, they're under flooring, they're under other things that don't have direct contact with people. What makes it significant for the project is once we start removing flooring, removing walls, scraping paint, we're going to expose those materials. And that's when it has to be cleaned up and contained. So there's no inherent problem with the building for people to be in it until we start construction. And that's when the remediation plan needs to be in effect and approved through EPA. But the proposal before you this evening is to complete the substrate testing, the soil testing, and we would ask for the roughly $40,000. It's 39 and some change.
Jeff, so basically, the post-verification sampling has been removed and you've increased the limits to some of the testing.
We've not brought you post-verification yet. Until we know the scope and scale of the entire program, we probably can't put a good remediation or good post-construction plan together. So that will come at some point during the project of post-remediation. We'll have to test prior to occupancy of each phase of the, of the project. And there may be an interstitial testing phase during construction, particularly if it's a, if it's an area that may be accessible or adjacent to other occupied spaces. We may do periodic testing in there to make sure we're, we're containing that properly. So we're not in a good position to come in with a post-construction or a, during construction testing plan.
Councilor McAllister?
I had a question on this. I know it says here in your statement that we anticipated that we'd have some contamination of things. And I know we've asked for something similar like this in the past, but it would help to understand if this was in line with our expectations for the testing budget, if this is above and beyond our budget, if we put 100,000 in and this is only PCBs, it's 40,000. We haven't even looked for lead or asbestos. I mean, to give us some relationship as to what was originally planned, and maybe we couldn't say 40,000 for PCBs, but we probably put a pot of money away.
We did.
So could we have some understanding of the relationship with the overall budget and how much this is? And then how far we are in understanding our exposure in all the different areas?
Yes.
Okay.
We have exceeded our expectations.
We're beyond that budget now, you're saying?
Yes.
We're beyond that.
We're beyond the testing budget. And until we, until we clarify the extent of the remediation, we won't know where we are in the construction budget. But we did, we did budget money for remediation based upon, as you remember, we did a first series of tests with Eagle Environmental, which were the caulk, as Ron said, with the, the real issue was caulk in the beginning of this process. So we tested caulk. And we did find some materials in caulk. So we made sure there was money in the budget for caulk. Once we started the, the deeper investigation of the building post-referendum, we found the other materials which exceed our budget, but not the total project budget because we did have design and construction contingencies.
Right.
For these particular issues. So as we go forward, we'll put that together for you.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to get a clear understanding of exactly what was budgeted. And then additionally, I know we did initial testing, then this is some more testing we want to do. But how much more potential testing are we going to have in regards to the materials in the building?
We hope this is it for PCBs.
For PCBs, but what about other things like asbestos, lead?
There's, there's no lead. You, you will see a proposal for soil on one of the underground storage tanks that was removed in 1992. The old tank leaked.
Right.
And there is some contaminated soil under that tank. You'll see a proposal for testing the extent to which that soil needs to be removed. And that's more for budget purposes than, than anything else, to know how much to anticipate in the budget for, for hauling that material out of there.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that we really have a choice in this because it is illegal to continue with the operation, but I'm just saying, now that we know a little bit more, maybe we should revisit it. And rather than coming back time and time again, maybe revisit the whole budget for testing and remediation, saying, now that we know a little bit more, it's going to be X amount as compared to what we originally said.
And that's what we're trying to get to. We don't know what the X amount is until we, A, determined what surfaces had materials on it, which we have. Now we have to determine the depth of which the concrete and the brick and the soil have the materials in it. Once we know that, we'll be in a good position to put a remediation budget together. Until we, until we know the depth of what we have to remediate, we can't really put a good budget together. Now, we have an estimate, but again, once these tests are complete, we'll have a much better understanding of what needs to go into the construction budget.
Deputy Mayor?
If I may. Jeff, what are we over, percentage-wise or dollar-wise? Do you have that figure? Okay. And just two other, just hypothetically, if the school weren't being renovated and down the road, we did, we did this basic maintenance and they had to take out, say, certain windows and replace windows, would we have to go through this testing?
The testing, I think from the remediation decision tree, is there is an option to test. If you're doing general maintenance and repair, there is guidance about actually how to protect workers and they're actually working on that material. But because this is a major renovation project, the Bureau of School Facilities does mandate this testing as part of it, as part of the budgeting process and, and design process for the schools. So normal operations and maintenance, not necessarily testing, but using guidance to protect workers and disposal of that material. But for renovations, certainly have to do the testing.
Good. But for renov, for that type of work, there's no mandate at all if they were just?
Correct.
General ma, so if they took out 20 windows that had this caulk in it and there'd be certain guidelines, but that would be it?
Again, as long as it's not through that funding source, which mandates the testing and decision whether to test is, is an option that you have as part of the decision tree.
Okay. And then prior to September of 2009, any major renovations, what, there was no mandate? So they would just do the renovation without bothering to test for anything?
Correct. 2009 is when, again, the EPA came out with the first guidance about it. There still isn't really a mandate to test. In Connecticut, the mandate to test as part of school construction projects was really 2010, when that actually mandate came out from the state of Connecticut. But in the rest of the country, it's really, again, that option is still out there, whether to test or not. There's a lot more significant knowledge base, obviously, with the guidance and the contractors in construction world knows very much about PCBs. It definitely is a exposure risk for an owner for landfilling this material improperly. It is an unauthorized use and illegal use. Also, the workers conducting the work must be protected. So the testing isn't really an option. It's just, it's something that really should be part of the due diligence of any project as of 2009.
Okay. And just one final question. So if, if I'm clear on this, if we didn't, if we had no funding from the state of Connecticut, would we have to do this?
Again, it would be an option. It would be an option whether you test from, from an EPA standpoint.
Okay.
It would be an option whether you tested or not.
Okay. But because of the state funding, we have to do this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But let me clarify that.
Please.
And we've done that, we've had this conversation with the town attorney. The issue we get into is if the contractor then says, wait a minute, this, this wing of this building was built in 1957, you haven't done substantial modification to it in terms of paint and plaster, I want this tested for PCB. And you could stop the project. And if it's there, then you have to do-
It definitely is a exposure risk for an owner for landfilling this material improperly. It is unauthorized use and illegal use. Also, the workers conducting the work must be protected, so the testing isn't really an option. It's just, it's something that really should be part of the due diligence of any project as of 2009.
Okay. And just one final question. So, if, if I'm clear in this, if we didn't, if we had no funding from the state of Connecticut, would we have to do this?
Again, it would be an option. It would be an option whether you test from, from an EPA standpoint.
Okay.
It would be an option whether you tested or not.
Okay, but because of the state funding, we have to do this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But let me clarify that.
Please.
And we've done that, we've had this conversation with the town attorney. The issue we get into is if the contractor then says, wait a minute, this, this wing of this building was built in 1957, you haven't done substantial modification to it in terms of paint and plaster, I want this tested for PCB. And you could stop the project and if it's there, then you have to do the remediation plan. So, we're going down a process of those areas we're going to disturb to make sure that we're not, we don't bid a project on one number and the contractor then says, hey, timeout. This is going to cost three times as much.
I understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to go by the regulations from September 2009 and, and, you know, what we're doing compared to this general maintenance type of thing, how they differ. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Muntner?
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there lead paint involved with this too?
No.
No.
No?
Bob, just a question. When you, on the presentation screens, you made a distinction and I think you were talking about there's been a recent change between waste disposal and remediation. And they were lumping them together? Did I, did I miss something there? Just to understand.
No, you've got it right. So what, what happens is a major part of the cost on this, on these projects is disposal. Like asbestos and other things, you often find them in tandem and so you're dealing with containment, very similar to asbestos, but the disposal for PCBs is a little more difficult. Again, having those two different definitions, the bulk product material, the caulking could go to certain landfills and the remediation waste would have to go to an independent landfill, usually much more costly and also much more volume of waste when you're taking out the concrete and materials. So that they made a reinterpretation to say if you take the two out together, they can go as bulk product waste for disposal. The characterization and so forth that we're talking about still needs to be done and the cleanup still needs to be done, but the disposal, the intent there, again, to hopefully lessen some of the costs for disposing these materials.
Okay, and just if I could follow up, if I understood what you were saying, you've got a base material probably in the caulking, for example, or the adhesives or the glue on the floor, and you have a possible, use a dumb term, but leakage into an adjoining concrete or masonry that may in fact have PCB that's leached into it?
Correct.
And how would you determine that it can be remediated versus needing to be removed?
Essentially, what we do is, first, for the testing, what we do, we actually remove the source material. So, once you've identified, so we take the mastic off of the caulking out and we actually take core samples of the adjacent masonry and send those in for analysis. So, the difference, again, regulated, regulatory materials for the caulking is 50 parts per million or greater. For the remediation waste, as I said, you have to be less than one part per million. So if you have that initial contamination of a source, the adjacent materials has to be cleaned to that, that lower standard. So we need to know what that standard is and how far it's migrated in, so whether it's an inch, two inches, three inches, however, into the material, so we can determine the remediation, whether we can remove the materials as part of the renovation project and rebuild them back. Or secondly, if there is options potentially to leave and maybe encapsulate some of these materials, the remediation waste, again, the unauthorized uses, the caulk has to go no matter what, but the adjacent surfaces, you may be able to do some further encapsulation with other building materials.
And this is something, obviously, you've done many, many times, I assume?
Yes, we've done it quite, quite a bit. Many projects we're involved with, with writing the remediation plans with EPA. Each project site unfortunately is unique and there's a, a planning process, which is part of our proposed scope of services to write that plan. The data that we're looking to gather here for these adjacent materials is what's necessary to actually document to EPA, how the site was characterized, what these additional cleanup levels need to be and how far we're going to have to take the remediation.
And I know before us tonight is, is the authorization for the actual testing and it's pretty well spelled out, it's a small piece of the total picture, but it is possible from what you're saying that as you look at these adjacent materials, that there could be, we could open up a can of worms essentially, a lot of materials would have to be removed and those are certainly not built into the budget for this project, I assume.
I'm not sure about the budget, what's included right now for the, the remediation waste, but again, yes, there definitely is a chance it's going to be contamination of adjacent materials. Just in the fact that some of the materials that have been tested include mastic materials and those kind of things, which are on concrete and likely it's, they were going to have some in the concrete and, and brick services.
And, and last question, what, what's been your experience with similar buildings of this age and this design? Is it common to be able to remediate or is it 50/50 or more likely that you're going to have waste disposal?
Certainly, it's, the majority of the projects we've been involved with, it's a lot more of disposal than actually trying to leave materials behind in many cases to take materials off, especially when renovating is new and putting the, the kind of dollars into renovation. But certainly either way is, is option. There are some other requirements as part of leaving materials behind that are, have to be undertaken. You know, it's, if you take it all out, the project ends and it's, it's over, but if you do leave materials behind, there's ongoing monitoring and maintenance that needs to be done for what you've left behind.
And that testing has to be on added for night?
Correct.
I mean, 20 years from now, we'll still be testing that to make sure it didn't bleach?
Potentially.
As opposed to ripping out two feet of brick and replacing brick all around all over there?
Correct.
And that remains to be seen with this testing?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Cocken?
There were a couple of changes between what was in our packet and then what was, we got here tonight. And one of them, a couple of them, assumed that the, for source testing, we went from like 10 to 55 samples and then supplemental testing from 60 to 100. And that must be the primary reason for the increase, I assume. I was just wondering what, what happened in between, you know, over the last several days to result in a need to, to have the additional testing?
We did do a review of, with the project team and looking at the reports and some of the early testing data was based on limited number of samples, so we needed to do some supplemental testing to make sure we have adequate number of samples. As I mentioned, doing the plans with EPA, we've been through the process and the data that EPA is looking for. As far as number of samples is not regulatory specified, but again, the number of tests that they're looking for is something that we, we know they're looking for about three to four samples of materials. Some of the materials need, need to have some, a couple additional materials to confirm that those source materials are indeed at the low levels they are. We also had some soil hits where we actually need to do some additional soil testing at lower depths because some of the soil contamination, the last point of where we tested, actually it was, it was highs, we need to figure out how deep and how far out to, to do that. And there was a couple of building materials where there may not have been any testing done originally. We want to actually do that testing to confirm those materials as well.
Do, do we, I hate to say this, but do we think that this is the correct number in terms of how much we're going to have to test or is it going to, could it go broad, much more, much broader?
The proposal we put together actually has a very conservative budget for the number of materials we physically see. We've built in some allowances for a few additional materials, but we did look hard at the building materials in the list of materials tested for asbestos and those kind of things and what's been tested thus far for PCBs. So the number that you have is conservative to take care of the remaining source materials that we think need to be tested and secondly, to address the substrate testing and depending on some of those additional source materials, we may not have to take all of the substrate tests as well if the materials come back non-PCB.
Okay. And, and you're using conservative to say, say you're, you're, you're using a high number could be potentially lower as opposed to conservative meaning a low number could be higher?
Correct, conservative on, on the high side.
Thanks.
And you, Counselor Drake?
Yeah, I just want to kind of clarify one of the things that Jeff said about the budget. Regarding going, going over the budget, we're over the budget a little bit on the testing part, not, you know, which is not a very big part of the budget. So, it's the idea of being over the budget is not a big deal. What we're trying to get to the point is to find out if we have a problem with the big part, the remediation. And the, and then the budget itself has a pretty good number for remediation, just question is, are we good enough, you know, so?
Yeah, and just to clarify on that, I mean, I'm not saying that 40,000 is going to be a drop in the bucket compared to the overall budget, but I'm just saying in the past, we've asked for sort of a breakdown of what we originally budgeted versus what this is, so we can just keep a running track and understand what we're actually voting on. That was more the point.
I would, I would take a bet if the remediation came out to be higher than we thought, you guys would be the first guys to hear about it, so. But we'll see. The other, the other issue came up too is that we have to get a, the state required a EPA-approved plan, remediation plan, just not a remediation plan. So, that's one of the reasons Fussin' O'Neill came in. They have a little bit more expertise than some of the other guys we had. And this is pretty, truth, and again, because it's late 2009 this started, this is pretty unique stuff. I mean, everybody, I've sat in these meetings and the expertise is one or two of these they've done. I mean, this is kind of, this is kind of breaking new ground. In fact, if we had done the project before we killed it four years ago, this was never been talked about, that it came up the second phase. I mean, it's kind of, you know, it's, it's a little bit, little bit out there. So, hopefully we'll come to peace with this pretty quickly and be done with it.
So, we have a motion to act upon?
Does that motion include the extra, the revised estimate?
Do we need to amend the, the motion that exists?
I think the motion that we have did not have.
It didn't have the, the motion is, be straightforward, it doesn't have any dollar figure within it?
If we could, if we could just have the minutes reflect that that motion was referencing the revised proposal received this evening?
Which is not to exceed $39,235, roughly.
You could round it to 40, that would be fine.
40,000.
Do you need a second for that or?
We had to move in second to discuss, correct?
Yes.
So, we have the amended motion. Doris, do you want to just?
We did. Do you want me to read back to you?
Yeah, please.
Motion to approve the proposal with Fussin' O'Neill to reflect the, reference the revised proposed, not to, proposal not to exceed $40,000 dated on March 11th, 2013 for the additional testing environmental services related to the high school project.
Actually, shouldn't it be March 29th? Because March 11th was the original version, this is revised to March 29th?
Okay, just change the date to the 29th?
March 29th? Sure.
Okay. Any other concerns about the motion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Next on the agenda is bids, the award of the bid for Millwoods Beach Drainage Project. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll motion to award the bid for Millwoods Beach Drainage Improvements to Running Brook Farms of Killingworth, Connecticut in the amount of $170,966.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is a steep-funded project. It's been a, one of, on our list of things we would really, really like to do over at Millwoods where every summer with torrential rain, we tend to get, it washes out the beach and we have to close the Millwoods Pool for several days as we clean the sand out of the pool. Kathy Bagley's here this evening to, to go over the agenda item, but we did get bids in for the work and they're very encouraging as to the completion of the project.
Do councilors have questions of Kathy? You want to hear more about what the plan is?
Yeah, I'd like to understand just how, how they're going to do that.
The, the plan that we're going to do with the, the design by the engineer is threefold. Where if you, if you think of the beach, at the top of the beach, the grass meets the sand. Right at that point, we're going to put a swale in, direct the water coming down off the lawn into catch basins. Then halfway down the beach, we're going to put drainage underneath, if you can think of where the pavilions are, the sun shelters. Right in that area midway down, we're going to put drainage under the beach so that as the rain comes down, we'll go through the sand and collect in the drain pipes. Going further down the beach to where the curbing is, we're going to put in a granite curbing, very low step, with drainage underneath there also. So, that's another way to collect the water. Sand, and those will be piped off and away from the beach area. Then, 18 inches of sand that's currently there on the beach, and I really shouldn't call it sand, it's a mix of sand and what I call Weathersfield clay, where water doesn't get through it right now. And we're going to take 18 inches off of it across the entire beach and replace it with beach sand. That beach sand will be able to act as a reservoir as the water comes down, take the sand in, direct it to the drainage. So it's almost a threefold way to make sure the water doesn't wash out the beach.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Drake?
Anybody ever done that before? I mean, just like a standard design, just, or someone just kind of made it up? I'm sorry, is this a standard design? Has someone's actually done this before?
The engineering firm that we hired has done drainage projects in a variety of places.
Any other questions of Kathy?
Just a question, I don't know if you know the answer to this offhand, but roughly, how much revenue do we generate from membership? And if you don't have it today, that's fine. I'm just curious to understand the...
Season passes or daily admission too?
Uh, yeah, just total revenue. How much it costs to run and operate this versus the revenue we get in?
Oh, gosh.
And maybe this is for a different conversation?
It's in the bull gym. Get, get on the books on the way out.
I, I think it's fractional, the amount of revenue versus the amount of expense.
Okay, so it's more of a town service than it is anything else?
Yeah, this is one of those things that the public provides.
Okay.
What has been the approximate cost of the washouts? So you end up closing early to, you know, put everything back together and you end up spending money to replace sand or, you know, clean it out so that you can open it up again. How much would you say, roughly speaking?
A, a large cost is the chlorine because we have to super chlorinate after all that sand goes into the pool. So, gosh, in a given summer, we've, recently we've gotten more washouts, probably the chlorine alone probably increases our bill, probably $5,000 maybe for chlorine and some of other chemicals that we use to balance the water there.
So you've had increased washouts? I think that's kind of the...
Yes, unfortunately, we're getting more water. I don't know if we're getting more rain or the beach is just washing out.
Okay. Do councilors have other questions?
I have a question. May I? No. This is council time. You can wait to the end.
Kathy, I think it, I mean, when it washes out, I just, from experience there, it's, it's frequently more than several days. I mean, it can, you can lose it for a week or two, right?
Yeah, we, we work really hard, if you've ever noticed, one of the jobs our lifeguards have to do literally, when the sand washes into the pool, is to go into the, the water with brooms and sweep the sand up to mix it up so the filters can draw the sand out and the, whatever may be in the water at that time. So, and it, it does take a while because you have to wait a day or two so that we chlorinate so it's safe to go in and do some of that work.
I have another, just a follow-up. Kathy, the, so the motion was to award to Running Brook Farms at almost 171,000, but the bid sheet shows them at 139. Is there something else?
Plus the other pieces.
Yep, I, we also did a few alternates because we weren't sure where the bid was going to come in at. So we pulled certain things out with the hope that if we got a favorable bid, we'd put some of them back in. So we, I could, if you want me to...
Yeah, no, okay. So, but basically you're confident that they're kind of the lowest bidder, the lowest responsible?
Yes.
Just one, if I may, just, just to add to, I think, the first question about, has this been done before? This, this company has, the engineering, is it, is it a proven, is it, is it a proven fix or is this something that, you know, we're going to, we're going to spend this money and then it doesn't work properly? Have you seen other projects that they've done this where it has worked and, and it's alleviated the problem?
The, the firm that we selected had a lot of experience in drainage projects, some with beach and sand, some on lawns and grass and, and different commercial enterprises where they did a variety of different drainage options. We were very clear with them when we did our interview process, that whatever happened had to work and that it, they seemed very comfortable with it and this is their business.
But how about if it doesn't? What recourse do we have?
Difficult question for me to answer. I mean, the design and the, the logic behind it seemed very good. I would expect that we would hold them accountable, that it's, the drainage should work.
So, we'll, we have them take out a bond, so if it doesn't work, we'll, we'll get refunded?
The contractor is going to be required to have a bond for the project.
For the project, but I'm talking about if it's not done, I mean, when it's done, then the bond, the bond is gone, but I'm talking about down the road, a year or two down the road, if this doesn't work properly, we spent this money and, and we have no recourse. Is that, is that correct? I mean, would that be a correct statement?
I could, I could review this with the town attorney to see what his recommendation is.
I, I would be more comfortable with that. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Because it's more of a design issue than a construction.
Yeah, I don't think an engineering firm's going to do a bond on that. Bond costs more money than the engineering. So, you just, you just, like, at some point, you have to just do it.
I, I understand, but I, I'd rather have, I mean, I think the town manager's comment is, to me, is well taken. I think perhaps we should table this. Does it have to be voted on tonight or can we table it one time till you get an answer back?
Answer on what?
Well, if, if we spend all this money and it doesn't, and, and a year down the road it doesn't work, we spent all this money and...
An engineering firm, I think, like Dave said, isn't going to put up a bond, I don't believe.
Like I say, the bond would be more money than engineering. They wouldn't do it. Nobody would do it.
I'm just...
If you want to put aside, we want this done this spring. Is that the idea or...
That was our plan, yes.
Is there a warranty on their work?
If, if I could add something, the, the engineers, as, as Dave said, probably wouldn't post a bond, but the errors, uh, they carry errors and omissions insurance, okay, which is essentially a bond. So, I think it's, it's a half a million or a million dollar project that they have to submit.
Well, I'd like to review that applicability with the town attorney before we rely on that.
Right, but, but their statute of limitations on their design is seven years. So, if they, if they messed up something on the design...
Yeah, but they'll just redraw it again.
Right.
Prince, sorry.
My, my, my issue is if, if, if we, if this were done in another, something similar to Millwoods Park and it worked and people say, "Yeah, this is working fine. It's, you know, solved our problem. It's fine." But if we spent all this money and then a year, a year or two down the road, we said, you know, we're still having an issue, then we spent all this and, and it's, it's just not working properly. That's, that's what I'm getting at. I mean, you know, design is one thing, but the actual outcome, to me, is another.
I'm not sure what you do.
And, and we were thorough as we went through the design process. We did test pits out at the beach to just determine what, what quality sand or clay was there. I mean, a lot of factors were looked at as we went through this process.
I understand. Well, I, I would like to make, to amend the motion to the table until next time till we get an answer back from the town manager.
Could... What's the, what's the calendar for this?
We're, we're targeted, if we start shortly, to be done by June 14th. If we, if we lose time, very possibly not be able to get it done this season.
But what if we wait till April 16th to sign a notice to proceed?
Can we prove a contingent on your...
Well, it depends on what, what the results are. Right?
Well, so, I mean, in order to keep the timeline and the process, prove a contingent on it, an acceptable review.
You don't want to mobilize and have the contractor spend money if you're not going to vote to approve this thing. That's the concern.
We're not saying to have them mobilized. We're saying, I'm wondering if that would save us time. So, when we're ready to pull the trigger, if it comes up...
Well, the time is the mobilization for the contractor.
I think what Stathie's saying is if we authorize a contingent on verifying E and O coverage would protect the intent of the design, and you verify that tomorrow, there's no reason to wait till April 16th to get the council back together and make a decision. So, as long as we validate that the E and O coverage would apply, then we'd want you to move forward. Then if it doesn't, then we would have to have a conversation April 15th.
And we haven't met that contingency then, that threshold, right?
Would two weeks be an issue?
It, it possibly does, but certainly do what you'd like. It's just possible we might not be able to do it this spring, just based on the timing with our calendar and what we were told would be the construction timetable. So, but we can certainly do all that work and, and see if we can make it happen.
Engineering's all done, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, how much was that, just curiously?
For the engineering contract, 17,500.
So, we're going to...
For the whole contract.
I'm just not sure how this works. We're going to, we're going to go back to a guy we've already paid to do it and say, if it doesn't work, he's going to do what now? I'm not sure. I guess, if we get this clear, what we're going to ask Jeff to do? I, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know, John, what's, I mean, what's he going to do?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not sure either. Well, you're an engineer. What I'm saying is...
Like I say, someone said to me, "I'm going to give you 17,000 and guarantee this thing for $200,000." I say, "Well, have somebody else do it," because I wouldn't do it, you know?
No, but my point is, we're, we're spending this money and I, you know, I could see the point of fixing this, but if we go through all this and in a year down the road it's not working, what do we do?
I don't know, John. I don't know what the answer is. I, I don't know what you do.
Well, I'm sure, you know, I'm not sure, but if, if we get what I would call a toe strangler, where the rain just comes, it, you know, you're going to get some dispersion into the water. I think the goal is to not shut down for three days on every rainstorm. So, I think we have to clarify at what level is this going to be work or the, you know, or it's still going to go in the water, because you're still going to get some in the water, just the way it's going to be. Or how much are you going to get in the water, depending on how much rain you're going to get. So, I think 99.9% of the storms, this isn't going to be an issue. We've got to find out where that threshold is and bring that back. But we'll have to, if that's what the council's wishes are, we can bring that back.
Just a question for the 17,000. What engineering firm did we pay for the design?
It was Two, Two Design out of New Britain.
Okay.
We have an amended request to table.
Is it a table or is it to...
John's amendment was to table.
Well, I, I'll, I'll reamend it to...
Well, there was no second on it.
There was no second on it anyway. Okay, so, I mean, I'll, I'll change the motion to, change it to what Council Manusa said. And, you know, we can vote on it and then you can get, you can get an answer. And if, if it's positive, then we're good to go. But if not, it'll come back to us on the, on the next council meeting. That's, that's fine. Jeff, you're comfortable getting whatever it is you're, you're suggesting to move forward or not, or bring it back?
I'm uncomfortable. I can answer, ask the question. I don't know what the...
What's the, what's the no answer? I'm kind of...
Well, that's, that's where I'm at. What's the no answer?
You ask the engineering firm, you're going to guarantee it works, and the guy goes, "I already got paid $17,000." And he's going to say, "I'm not guaranteed anything." So, the answer's no. I could tell you the answer would be no right now.
Because he already did the work.
Well, he already did the work.
It's a design. He did a design, probably without a guarantee. Probably like this design should work, practically speaking.
I guess, I can understand where John's coming from, but I'm just not sure what the answer would be or what the question is, how to get an answer.
What you're saying, David, is no one's going to guarantee it. So, we either do the project without the guarantee or we scrap the project.
Or scrap the project, yeah. But you can, I mean, he may guarantee it, but I don't know why. What, he already got paid, I assume.
So, did you actually amend that, John?
I did, yeah.
All right, then I'll second that.
This is amended to, um, for the contingency?
Yes.
But if it comes, if it comes back, like, because he's going to say no...
And we come back and figure out what we want to do.
So, we're just not going to do the project?
No, you, you, you could vote on it and, and it'll go, it'll go forward if the council decides to have it go forward.
Because he's going to say no. We already paying him.
Kathy, the, the contractor that you're proposing has looked at the engineering, I assume?
They bid on the project.
Based on the engineering?
Based on the engineering design.
Have they, to your experience and knowledge, have they done a project similar to this?
Their, their references were checked and they, they've done projects. They've done a lot of, um, ashore erosion. They've worked down on the, the Long Island Sound Shore for a lot of the storms that have come through. And they've done a lot of, um, this, this project here, they're going to be digging up the sand, putting down the piping and then doing the drainage work. So, they've done a lot of that work on the shore.
So, did we get this contingency motion set or not yet?
No.
Because the other issue is that we don't have a town council meeting until May because of the, unless we have a special meeting though, right?
We're, we're going to ask, that was something we're going to discuss at the end, talk about meeting at 6:00 on the 15th prior to the budget hearing to act on any issues that may come up in the interim because of the, the time lapse between the next scheduled meeting.
So, maybe, maybe we're looking for Jeff some sense of guarantee. I, you know, come back for the 15th with some sense of guarantee. I don't know.
But there's probably not going to be, there's not going to be a guarantee.
I can't ima, there may be, but I can't be completely it's going to be a guarantee for $17,000.
Well, no more than a road paper's going to guarantee the roads aren't going to crack in a year.
Right.
And the designer, the designer already has the 17,000. They would, they're not going to provide some guarantee on top of that for free.
Kathy is saying, we're, we're doing a, a design plan to give us the best chance at not seeing this problem persist. I doubt anybody's going to say, "Well, I'll guarantee you'll never have washout at Millwoods." They're saying, "This is a design plan. And I assume this contractor's agreed is a pretty good plan and we got a grant to do it, reflect it." But I doubt anybody's going to step forward and say, "I promise you, in five years, your Millwoods will look exactly like it is when we're done." And so, and no more than a contractor does road work is going to say, "You're not getting any cracks in my road pave." And this is the, you know, we're, we're asking a question that can't be answered. I don't think anybody's going to do that. I think we have to be satisfied this is an expenditure in light of the grant money from the state that makes sense and will accomplish a goal. It's been a clear problem. It's not going to get solved if we don't do it. I would, I mean, I would, I would let Jeff ask the question, but I don't think our decision to do this or not do it should be based on a guarantee. Might as we'll just forget doing it right now. It'll waste the time. I don't think this has got a guarantee. A guy who paints your house doesn't guarantee the paint's not going to be.
All right, I think we beat this one to death, so let's move.
I think we have, we have an amended motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by...
We don't, we don't have, I don't have, I don't know if it's for errors and omissions to have, find out if that would kick in or if you're going to be contingent on whether it works or not after a year.
I think we just go with the original motion.
Oh, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I think we kind of defeat the contingency motion.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have a big problem there. It washes out every summer. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of residents who swim there. You know, we have a professional engineer who's done it for design. We have staff that's reviewed it. It, it, it's passed a number of hurdles. It, it's got to be better. I, I don't know how you do a guarantee. If it's four inches of rain, the guarantee doesn't apply, but if it's three inches, it does apply. I don't, I don't even know how you would structure that. I mean, the point is we got a, we got a plan that's been put together by professionals. We have a bad situation there. There are hundreds of people who can't swim there if we have big rains. Let's go forth with it so we can have it done for this swimming season.
So, we have an amendment to the original motion. Are you clear about what that amendment is?
No.
Why don't we just withdraw the amendment?
I'll withdraw the amendment.
There we go.
That's fine.
Now, we're moving.
Move, move the original motion. It's fine.
We beat John down enough.
Withdraw the second?
Spend the money.
Okay, we're going to vote on the original motion.
I want to see John out there in his, in his skivvies every week.
Every week. I never go to Pine Acres. Meanwhile, Mill, Millwoods.
It's not Pine Acres.
No, I go to Pine Acres, not Millwoods.
Okay, we have, we're voting on the original motion.
Correct.
Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Thank you. Phew. 4B, the contract extension for office supplies.
Motion to award a one-year extension of office supplies, bid number 2011-17 to suburban stationery.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. This is an extension of an existing bid for our office supplies. They're holding the unit prices and the original bid documents provided for a one-year extension. So, staff would recommend keeping the unit prices with suburban stationers.
Any questions of the town manager?
Yeah, how can we guarantee those pens are going to work in a year?
We'll ask for a copy of their errors and omissions.
That's where the charges came from.
It's okay. It's the Roman Senate, it's the Roman Senate, part two.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. 4C, award of bid heating oil and diesel fuel. Motion?
Motion to award the CROG bid number 576 and 590 for diesel fuel and number two heating oil to Dime Oil Company for the time period of July 1st, 2000, it should be 2013 through June 30th, 2014, and contingent upon appropriations in the fiscal year 2013, should be 2014, adopted budget.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. At this time, I'll ask Assistant Town Manager Rayanne Palmer to go over this with you.
I'm almost afraid to. Um, this is our annual bid that we do through CROG for diesel and number two heating oil. The heating oil is about 30 cents a gallon less than the current year, and the diesel is about 35 cents a gallon less than the current year. So, we locked in at this pricing and before we sign the contract, we need to have you authorize it.
Any questions of Rayanne? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Item 4D, a change order for road milling. A motion?
Motion to award a contract extension to Costello Industries for pavement milling in the amount not to exceed $30,000.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. At this time, I'll ask Town Engineer Mike Turner to go over this issue with you. The state hasn't approved a contractor yet, so we're looking to extend the current unit prices.
That, that is correct. The state annually bids vendor-in-place paving, they bid milling, and they've in fact bid both of those items. But in this particular case, they have not made an award yet, so we can't tag on to their bid. So, in the process of, or in the interest of trying to keep our spring paving program going forward, we contacted the vendors and they've agreed to hold their 2012, 13 prices in the, in the interim. So, what we're asking for is essentially enough money to get us through this spring paving season and then we'll be back to you later this summer with the new numbers to reflect the new state bid.
Any questions on Mr. Turner? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, thank you. 4E, change order for road paving. A motion?
Motion to authorize a change order to the Tilcon, Connecticut contract for paving in the amount of $25,000.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Mike Turner, Town Engineer, same issue.
In this case, it's, it's the same issue with Tilcon. Tilcon is our low bidder on the vendor-in-place paving program. We currently have a, an open PO of $125,000. We're just shy the amount that we'll need to, to finish our spring paving. So, again, we're asking for a change order to increase that amount, let us finish our spring paving, and we'll be back.
With the state bid.
With the state bid.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, item 5A, there's no ordinances, resolutions, or appointments for introduction minutes for the regular meeting, March 18th. A motion?
Motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections, additions, omissions? Council Cocken?
Um, just quickly, at the top of page three in the first full, full paragraph, I think it's, um, do you build in custodian or secretary retirements rather than the word retires? That's it.
Any other corrections? All those in favor of the amended minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Um, item seven, public comment. Are there members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Tucker?
I'm going to stand up this time. Lou Tucker, 65, Herbert Place. Senior moment. Oh, there's two things I was going to talk about. Oh, what was it about the beavers out in the reservoir? Is that, that's a problem again? We are going to have to kill them? Get them out of here?
There has been a problem with the beavers at the reservoir and there've been several that have been removed.
Yeah, okay, I understand that. Or, the other thought came to mind was to do with the lead poisoning in the town, especially the old houses. And the EPA's infinite wisdom, they have a ray that a commercial outfit can take it out, have to seal the room, wear masks, and the person that takes it out has to be registered. Whereas, me, as an owner, I can take it off myself and just throw it in the dump. This is not dumb. I don't know if you knew that, but I just thought I'd bring it up.
Any other members of the public? Mr. Young?
Good evening again. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. Uh, this evening, the town manager had spoke about his proposed budget, extremely brief in his discussion. And, um, you know, I know there's a lot of numbers behind all of this information. And my question is, when you go online and look at it, and I only went online this evening just before I came here, I didn't have much of a chance to look at it, but, except for copy off your front page of it. But does, have the ability to, every one of your numbers to click on it and see what's in the background that makes up that number?
It's just a PDF version of the...
So, it's a PDF. So, it's, okay. But there isn't any way we could tell what a single number is. I mean, if I asked you to run me some report, it would take a long time.
Depends on the report.
Well, I don't think you want to go there. The reports that I, that I spoke about earlier were not big reports. These things are big reports. were not big reports. These things are big reports. And, you know, look how long it takes. But I wondered if it, do you have, do you have any Excel spreadsheets that are, that show all of this information? That has, has all that information in the background?
No.
No.
We have a Munis report.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a common thing to have with the Excel twelve or two thousand
Our budget is in Munis.
Okay. All right. Just asking. Um, I did notice, you know, while I'm sitting out here looking at this, the first ten or eleven pages of your introduction, the MDC has an increase of three point two percent, which is roughly what your entire budget is increasing, three point five.
Two point six nine.
But you're, you're, you have those other little, the levies and that kind of stuff in, in there, don't you?
Total two point six nine.
Okay. But, so they're higher than you are. But because they're only at three point two-two, they have nailed the rest of us for increases in our water bills. Because I've seen my water bill shoot up considerably as well as my other bills that are loaded with taxes on it. And then also you have the Connecticut Health District increasing at seven and a half percent, which is, seems high. And, and twelve point two percent for the probate quarter. I mean, what in the world can they use? I mean, you know, we've been in a recession for a long time. And why in the world would they be looking at twelve percent increase unless they don't know, I mean, unless they're just spending money like crazy? Because, because they have a very fluid, very liquid type of an operation there, uh, where they, they, they pull in a lot of dollars. And to ask us for twelve point two percent is extremely high, given the fact that where we are in this economy, and I would hope that you'd go back there, that's what I said, is there, is there a report that you can look, click on whatever those dollars are and see why these increases are happening? You know, it, it, it gives a citizen a view. To, to give us a, a five-minute presentation and then next week, next meeting, give us a twenty-minute presentation, we have no idea what's behind those numbers that we can really talk intelligently about.
Well, each of the budget sections contains a six-year review of expenditures in each category. So you can see how those numbers are generated in each budget.
In the book.
In the book.
In the book. Okay. I'll be going through it.
I'm sure.
Mr. Tucker tonight, in the earlier section of the public comment, brought forward a advertisement from the rear reminder, which I saw as well, and it was regarding football. I didn't really read it. I just saw it. It was Weathersfield Football. You probably have it sitting on your desk.
It's youth football.
It appears to me. It's, it's, what is it?
Youth football.
Youth football. Is that Weathersfield?
It's, yes.
And is that paid for by Weathersfield?
It's paid for by participants.
By participants.
It's not part of the educational, um, teams.
So it's not coming out of any town budgets anywhere?
Correct.
Great, great. That was a question. But now the next question is, are you saving money on, on gate receipts from your, your games over at the soccer field slash turf field? Because you're talking about putting turf on the field in the next couple of years after this renovation. And, you know, they should have been saving up money over the, over the course of time that when it comes due to be resurfaced again, the money would all be there from the gate receipts. And I just wondered, as a question, and I think we've talked about this earlier, maybe six months ago, and I, this is next, you know, I'm just bringing it up tonight, that, you know, we should be seeing a, a pile of money sitting there because of the gates. You've got lights now. You're drawing in hundreds and millions of people who are paying big dollars to, to come and watch these games, which fund our electric bill for that operation. It should fund the turf. It should fund the upkeep. And talking about upkeep, I was kind of surprised tonight to hear about upkeep on our open space. Um, you know, I don't know. Mayor, you don't buy things that you can't keep, keep up. But, uh, we should be seeing a big pile of money sitting there or, because how long has that turf been on there? Four years now? Three, four years?
Nine.
And how long is it going to last? It's going to last another three and a half years. And, and the full life of it was around eight or nine years, if I recall correctly.
It'll last over fourteen years when it's all said and done.
Yeah, fourteen years? Good. That's good. I don't want to pay for it again. Um, and then I think someone just spoke about, tonight about tire tracks along the sidewalks. And yeah, they're, it's a common thing. Uh, you know, too bad you don't have a bobcat that has, you know, that it's approximately the, the width of, and I know, it's only three feet wide. I know.
We do, but we only have one and they're expensive.
But it ends up tearing away the dirt. Uh, there's, you know, and then in the spring, you got to come back and repair it.
Right.
Right. And, and that's too bad. Um, but was, another thing that was interesting tonight, talking about home prices and how people, encouraging people or homeowners to upgrade your houses. I mean, gosh, you know, we're getting hammered on tax increases year after year. People don't have money to spend on their houses. I, I did mine, mine a few years ago and it was a terrible bundle of money. And now, you know, to, to encourage people to go upgrade their houses so it'll improve the appearance of town, I mean, that, that's a self-motivated thing. A person would be self-motivated to do that. That's why I spent a, a lot of money on my house to upgrade it. But to encourage people, I mean, I don't know. That don't, you know, it's spending more money that they probably don't even have, just like the town, which is spending money all the time that it doesn't have. Tonight, you also had a, a presentation regarding PCBs, uh, which I've been following to some degree in, in an oil tank. And I remember only a few years ago, if it was six, over in the building next door during public comment, or I should say during Board of Education meetings, there was a talk about some oil tank that was in underground, under a wall that had, had some problems that they had to fill with sand. And I don't know if this is the same one.
No.
Uh, but I can't imagine them having more than one oil tank.
There's three on that site.
There's three, there's three on the site. So how about that one that's filled with sand underneath, with a wall on top of it? Is that okay?
It's, they're going to make sure that the sand is holding and close it according to DEP regulations.
Well, I'm just hoping that it's not another big episode of money being spent. That's all. Um, and then of course, we, it's interesting to hear about these PCBs and, you know, all of them that are, you know, the window caulkings, the frame caulkings, the door caulkings, the joint, joint expansions on the building. And, and that's what they're doing is putting that PCB, material with PCBs in it. And I take it, we must be doing the same with our houses.
Well, considering you can't buy it since nineteen eighty, it's kind of tough to get.
But, you know, you renovated the building in nineteen ninety. They should have cleaned it up back then and should have, and put in some different kind of material that doesn't have it. I know, I don't believe I have it in mind, but.
Can I, I just want to clarify one point about the material.
Yes.
What we're finding isn't that the caulk is hot. Okay? What we're finding is that the old caulk that had PCBs in it, the PCBs leached into the brick.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
So now that stuff is leaching into the new caulk that was put in in nineteen ninety-two or nineteen eighty or whenever it was. So that's making the caulk hot, not the PCB, not the caulk. The stuff reading it out of the walls.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not that we're putting it back, we put it back in the building, it's coming out of the brick.
Coming out of the brick.
Yeah. That's what we believe is the source, not the caulk itself.
Well, you know, it wasn't, it was, many years ago, I, I, I had a roof that had a problem with it. And it was whatever the name of the company, the, that made the shingles. And they came in with a settlement. Maybe, maybe we should be looking at some kind of settlement with, of course, it might be many years, but nineteen ninety, you know, maybe the guy is still in business and the insurance company is still in business. And, and you might want to think about that. And, and you know, with the money, and with all the talk about money, shortage of money, you know, wouldn't it have been nice, Mayor, if we had that thirty-five thousand dollars from the ATT U-verse box in our treasury like I suggested? And with the sale of the, the Wilkes Farm, two hundred and five thousand dollars, I mean, it just went from one bucket to another and it's gone. Uh, to buy what they call development rights. And, and I, I, I'm turning in my, I'm, I'm so disgusted over that, that we are buying, taking that money that we really need in our town, even though it's a small amount of money. Yes, ma'am. Yes. It's just a small amount of money, two hundred thousand dollars, but we could have used that for something. And it's too bad now, we're not going to have it. The developer is going to reap from that. Thank you very much and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members? Mr. Rue?
Once again, George A. Rue, nine fifty-six, Cloverdale Circle, and that's R-U-H-E. A couple of things, and I'm not going to harass you, but they, points came up on, interesting. You mentioned the budget hearing several times, Mayor Hemmon. And as I recall, the charter permits a, an extended period to speak for the citizenry at the budget hearing, which is different than, and that's going to be followed. Okay, that answered that question. I'm sure of that. Uh, Mr. Young just mentioned something, and I had jotted it down independently also. Mr. McAllister mentioned something about a, a referendum in November, and I associated the words with maintenance and so forth. And, and I, I, I didn't quite get the connection on a referendum that would have to do with maintenance of open spaces. Is there something in the wind on that or? In other words, was, was this just a poor choice of words? When, when you talked about a referendum in November?
Can I comment? No, I have spoken for a while indicating that we seem to keep on purchasing open space, but we don't have any money to maintain it, whether it be Wintergreen Woods or a Wilkes Farm to do anything with. So I thought, we're not allowed to use open space purchase acquisition funds for any kind of maintenance or improvement. So we would have to actually do a separate referendum if we wanted to actually do substantial improvements to any of our open space.
Improvements or maintenance? Because you can't, you don't, you wouldn't bring maintenance to a referendum, would you?
You're referring to capital.
No, all right. There has to be some capital investment. All right. I just want to get that clear in my, in my head. And I was interested too, when you're encouraging people to modify their houses and take care of their property. I would urge the town to do the same thing. So it's a two-way street. And I picked that up in Joyce Rosigano's editorial in the, in the Weathersfield Life, you know, about, it's all a citizen's fault. And probably the town is probably one of the largest owners of what might, might, I might describe as, as blighted property. Enough said on that. Dolores mentioning the, the records, the historic documents preservation grant. I think that's probably a good idea. Now, do, for example, taking the board where you, they would save all of their minutes and stuff like that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, but those minutes never really track with what people like me or Young or others are saying. Is the, is the actual physical record of these meetings, is that kept in, in an archive somewhere? Or does that gets tossed away in future hyster, historians never know what the hell the citizens are saying?
The minutes as voted on at the meetings are maintained.
But the, the, the documentation of what each citizen said, that, that gets lost?
That's in the minutes. But it's not verbatim. We don't have verbatim. And minutes are reflected, the actions of the council.
Yeah, all right. Because then the, and the board, the council minutes are reasonably, well, good. But the board minutes, you never understand what, it's kind of hard to relate to what they write and what you said. That's, that's just a kind of a question. I got to chuckle out of Johns with the beavers and the people. The people, you know, the people are the bigger problem than the beavers most of the time. And, and I think, John, you've got a good point about, we got to learn to live with these, other, other inhabitants of our, of our good earth. A quickie on the PCBs discussion. That was a very interesting discussion. It was kind of hard to follow. And the question that comes to my mind as we are looking at other expenditures that are starting to creep in, and there will be more, and here's my question. Is it reasonable to arrive at the conclusion for we citizens that the people who were painting such a beautiful glorious picture about how this thing is going to go perfect and nothing's going to go wrong, that they were being either less than completely competent, less than being completely candid, or were they not smart enough to ask the right kinds of questions as they were confronting a major change to a big building in town? This is something, I'm not saying it was. I'm saying, this is what I expect you guys to be thinking about. Keep you guys thinking about this kind of stuff. And along that same line, it was interesting as a number of questions were asked of Kathy Bagley. Drake asked one and I think Mr. Consol asked the other, is you, I think we're specifically referencing, was this kind of an approach ever used? I think that was the thrust of your question. But they, she never answered that question. And I fault you for not going back and pressing a little harder. Because it was, the answer that came out that I heard, simple citizen that I am, is, oh, this is a great contractor. He knows what to do. He's done a lot of, you know, all this kind of work. But the engineering question, whether that solution was going to work, was never answered. Now, I'm listening to this as an, as a retired engineer, and it seemed reasonable to me. I think one of you said, it's never going to keep all of the sand out. And I think the other point that was raised by several of you is, is the cost benefits there too. In other words, if this is going to cost a lot of money to fix and it's going to cost a significantly smaller amount of money to periodically clean it out, when, when things are tough, I think you have to start to look at making sure that you, that you use a good cost benefit analysis and say, hey, you can do one heck of a lot of cleaning up for what it costs us over time to repair this. And since we don't know what's going to happen in all the storms in the future, although there will probably be many, uh, just a couple of thoughts that, something to think about and share. And one other thing, we here are the public. We're never the audience. Thank you, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand corrected.
Any other member? Thank you, Mr. Rue. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Something we can do in here? We're going to stay here?
Are we moving or are we staying?
We'll, we'll move.